Business arising, we have presentations and delegations. We have Chris Montgomery, the manager of exploration production for, production engagement for CAP. Welcome. It's wonderful to see you up here in BC's Energy Capital.
Yes, thank you very much for having me. And congratulations, we know of course at CAP that you're a strong advocate for our sector as well. And you're always pushing us to do better, which is good for us too, so.
Holding your feet to the fire is one of my favorite jobs.
That's right, as you should. So, thank you very much for having us up. I have a very brief presentation. So, you'll work the slides?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. About half of it is just kind of an update on where the industry is at today. And then, on one slide, I'll go through several bullets on a number of policy files that we're working on at CAP to give you a sense of what our take is on some of the issues the province is dealing with. And I know you've been dealing with some of those same issues here as well. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with CAP, we represent, as our name suggests, the oil and gas industry in Canada, the upstream producers. We have about eighty, sixty members, sorry, and they produce about eighty percent of all of Canada's oil and natural gas. So, if you can go to slide number three. Oh, this it? Okay. Sorry, that looked like a recorder, so I wasn't sure. So, the first slide I have here, and it's a story you guys know, but I always like to start out my presentations with this, is that despite all the conversation around the move to lower carbon energy around the world, which is necessary, the reality is all the predictions, credible predictions, show that we're going to need more energy in all of its forms around the world for the foreseeable future. And the quickest growing resource that will provide that energy is natural gas. And as CAP, representing Canadian producers, we feel that the best way to supply that energy to the world is making sure that Canadian energy in British Columbia, natural gas, can get to the world, in the case of natural gas, through liquefied natural gas facilities on the west coast of British Columbia. We can produce the lowest emitting natural gas in the world here in British Columbia, thanks in part to our large electric resources, hydroelectric power resources, and we should be making a difference by providing that natural gas to the world. It's been a tough several years for the sector, and I'm going to use this slide to tie a few things together. In 2014, as a sector, we invested about $81 billion worth of capital into the Canadian economy. And every year since that, we've been pretty much on the downturn with a, you know, brief uptick in 2017. So, we're about half that, a little less than half of that, we're predicting in 2019. The industry continues to struggle primarily because of the fact that we can't get our products to market. We're, in the case of natural gas, being pushed out of our traditional markets by natural gas producers in the United States. They are much closer to those markets, and therefore it's much cheaper to get their product to, say, Ontario, which now we're importing about two-thirds of its natural gas from the United States. And in the case of oil, our oil pipelines are full, and we're seeing the dramatic consequences of that in the industry, particularly next door in Alberta. But it has consequences here in British Columbia as well, that I'll delineate in another slide here. So, that capital translates mostly into drilling wells. In 2014, you know, last good year that we had, we were up around 10,800 wells. This year, we're predicting slight decline over last year, which was 6,100 wells, 6,100 wells. We expect to be around 6,000 or so this year, again, because of some of the struggles that we're facing as a sector. Our natural gas prices have been suffering, but this also creates an opportunity for us, you know, in LNG, taking advantage of higher world prices. These are equal average prices. What I would say is, though, what this show doesn't, slide doesn't show, is the volatility on our markets that we're dealing with. And it's really hard on our producers these days. And so, particularly in the summer, in the fall, we're likely to see it again. You know, we've seen over the last two or three years, times where we've had negative pricing for our natural gas, which effectively means that producers are having to pay people to get rid of their gas. And that's being driven by the fact that producers here in British Columbia and next door in Alberta are able to drill for liquids-rich natural gas that's very deep. The value is in those liquids, and so the natural gas, in a lot of cases, is a byproduct. And so, we kind of have to deal with that, and we really need to find a market to get rid of that natural gas, which again speaks to the importance of LNG. So, the volatility is not shown here. It's quite extreme, and it's hard for producers to plan their activities in light of that And also tied to that is crude oil prices. And so, we saw world crude prices showing in those top blue and red lines on the graph drop over the course of the fall. But because our pipelines are full, we saw a dramatic decrease in the Canadian price of gas, or, sorry, of oil. We saw differentials in the extreme. Some producers in heavy oil country, round Lloydminster in Alberta, I know of one case where a producer got a contract for 16 cents for his oil. It was very difficult times for producers, and the market was starting to sort it out. But it was going to sort it out in a very ugly way. The Alberta government ended up stepping in and putting a cap on production essentially in order to close that differential, which is not ideal, but it brought prices up, allowed the government of Alberta to continue collecting royalties, which it would not get at very low oil prices. And so, you know, the government has some drivers. CAP never took a position on that, but the thing I would say here is that the liquids that we're producing in British Columbia, the price and demand for those liquids is directly tied to the price of Canadian heavy oil. Because those liquids are used to dilute oil from the oil sands, that's where the demand for the product is. And so, British Columbia producers were seeing at that time extremely low prices for their condensate as well. And so, it was having impact here, and it is having impact on drilling forecasts for the year. So, it's all kind of tied together. Again, primary solution for that is to get our oil to market through additional pipeline So, that's kind of, you know, what the year's looking like for us. Again, not a great year, but I do want to hit on a number of issues here. And one that I left off the slide that I'll probably start with is the recent review by the province of hydraulic fracturing practices in British Columbia. They released a report two weeks ago, I believe. And so, that report, I'll just highlight a couple of things that it found. And the first is that it found that the industry is well-regulated in British Columbia. And so, that's important to recognize. It did come up with 97 different recommendations. As CAP, we have not looked at all of them yet. We're in the process of going through that, as is the government. But what we found in our initial review is that between industry and government, a number of the recommendations that have been made are already being worked on. So, that should give some comfort. And then, the report recommends some areas where data could be better. And so, I suspect that's where the focus of government may be going forward. But the government has committed to releasing a bit of a work plan, a little bit of that report, and a more concrete response sometime in May. So, we look forward to working with the government on that. As an industry, we are always committed to continual improvement of our practices and look forward to working with the government on whatever the plan looks like coming out of those recommendations. So, that's that one. On the LNG industry in British Columbia, we also have had some good news there in the last week or so. The bill that, Bill 10, being passed by the legislature in Victoria, is good news for LNG in British Columbia. It does make us much more competitive on a world stage and is allowing LNG Canada to go ahead with their project. We've also seen some news from Chevron in the last couple of weeks as well, on a couple of fronts. They've made some, made public some design plans essentially on what their facility will look like. And they're also requesting the ability to export more gas than what they originally planning for from when they first launched their project. So, they haven't taken the final investment decision, but that obviously shows some commitment to British Columbia gas as well. So, that's a good sign. On Caribou, I know it's been a hot topic in northeast BC. I've seen, you know, coverage of some of the town halls that have been quite large. I'll say, you know, I recognize from some of our stakeholders' perspective, a frustration that the oil and gas sector has not been at the table as much as they would like us to be at this moment. I would say that's for a couple of reasons. First, the public debate has largely been around the southern mountain caribou, which does not directly impact our industry, just where they are. We're certainly following that conversation closely, because whatever comes out of that could have an impact on the boreal caribou discussion, which will be held down the road, surely. So, the oil and gas sector has had an agreement with the province for a number of years. It expired this past summer, and industry has actually funded over $10 million in research and other measures to help protect caribou in the boreal forest north of here. And so, we're in the process now of trying to renegotiate some sort of agreement with the province on that front. So, it's been pretty quiet because of the nature of those conversations, but industry is committed to playing its role in protecting caribou habitat and seeing the growth of caribou populations. But the number way, number one way to ensure that happens is to ensure we have a healthy natural gas industry, so that we can actually be participants in that process, whether it's through dollars or otherwise. It also has spin-off benefits, you know, in, with First Nations and economic opportunities if we can have industry working on the landscape while at the same time protecting that caribou habitat. And so, that's our ultimate goal there. On land use planning, so the province, as you're well aware, is renegotiating the Fort St. John LRMP. We have our SEIA interim measures. We have another, a number of other initiatives by the provincial government all in the area of land use planning. So, the first thing I would say is that this is a very complex space for industry right now, and we would like it to be simpler than it is. We're certainly committed, having certainty around land use planning is helpful for the industry, because it allows us to know what the terms of operating are. I'd also say, we recognize the province's need to move forward in some respects on land use planning in their goals of reconciliation with local First Nations. And so, we want to be an active participant in those conversations, want to be at the table to have those conversations, not just with the provincial government, but with First Nations as well, to make sure that we're getting to the right outcomes. But some of the uncertainty there is creating a lot of nervousness for our members right now. So, it is going to be a somewhat challenging time, but again, I think we're getting some of the correct signals from the provincial government that, you know, we will be at the table in an appropriate way, and we can move that conversation forward. That's kind of where we're at today. But, you know, land use planning is kind of symbolic of a number of other files that we've talked to the province about. They have a very ambitious plan. There's a lot of fatigue amongst, I don't think just the oil and gas sector, but other stakeholders as well, because of layers of complexity and some of the consultation processes and the way they interact with each other. So, we've been expressing to the provincial government the need to make sure that all of this is functioning in a coordinated way, leading to the same outcomes, so that we're not getting, you know, competing outcomes in some of those conversations as well. So, we're hopeful though. Bill C-69 is a piece of federal legislation that overhauls the environmental assessment process for major projects in Canada. It's currently before the Senate. The committee is out traveling the country now, hearing from folks on the bill. We have significant concerns with this legislation, and in our view, major projects going forward, you know, the likelihood of them being approved under the system that's being proposed is highly unlikely for the oil and gas sector. It creates a more complex process. It creates more political points of intersection within the assessment process, and we have significant concerns. And it should concern other stakeholders across the country as well. This is not just about the oil and gas business. It's not just about oil pipelines, as a lot of the conversation has been. Anybody who wants to build anything big in the country will face significant hurdles under Bill C-69, whether that's a mine, an oil pipeline, or a bridge over certain waterways. It's going to make life very difficult to get some of those things approved. So, you know, we haven't been fighting the bill outright. We have major concerns with it. We've put forward a package of amendments in seven different areas that we hope that the Senate and ultimately the government will consider and adopt to make that bill much better than it is today and to put us in a much more workable place than where we are. So, we're putting a lot of effort into that. Certainly appreciate the support, not only of the mayor, the city, but also the Resource Municipalities Coalition on that front as well. And I know the coalition is testifying in Victoria, or Vancouver, I'm not sure which Vancouver.
Yep.
So, appreciate that. And then, the final one I wanted to hit on before I take any questions is Bill C-48. That's the legislation, again, out of Ottawa, that would ban crude oil exports off the north coast of British Columbia. We're opposed to that. Obviously, we feel that it unnecessarily restricts access to markets for us as a sector. We also feel it's not based on science, so the way the bill is drafted, you know, if the goal is to keep products that persist on the water off the water, it doesn't achieve that, and it also prohibits the shipping of certain products that actually don't persist on the water. So, it's not even based on science in the definitions that it has, and that is of concern to us as well. And again, looking forward, today, there's not a market for British Columbia condensate in Asia, for example, because all that condensate is displacing US production today. But down the road, if we're successful at developing our resources, there may be future markets for British Columbia products as well. And so, it's not just about heavy oil out of the oil sands, it's about a whole host of products that could be produced much more locally. So, I'll leave it there. Those are the things that are keeping CAP busy these days, and happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you for that. So, just at our committee, the whole meeting, we had the Joy River First Nations do a presentation on their Kitzatse tribal park that they're looking at managing, and they did discuss the boreal caribou at that, and they're looking at linking, or hopefully linking, the Chinchaga wilderness.
Right.
To allow for the caribou there. So, you'll find on our agenda for the committee, the whole of their presentation, if you're interested.
Good, thank you.
We have told the province that we will be engaged partners in the Land Resource Management Plan. And because the province has already recognized through some agreements that we have, that the municipalities are the service centers for the industries in the region. And so, any kind of socioeconomic impacts will impact the municipalities. And so, with that said, we will be engaged, and how we manage that remains to be seen, because, to be brutally honest, the province doesn't even know what it's going to look like. I haven't, I haven't heard from Rob on how the presentation to the Senate went today, but yes, the mayor Fraser, on behalf of the Resource Municipality Coalition, presented to the Senate today on Bill C-69, and I'm going next week to Terrace to present on Bill C-48.
Thank you.
And so, you know, when, when politics, when political intervention is available, it'll happen, and it honestly should not be happening. We have institutions within our nation that we should be relying on to make decisions for the people without political interference. I would be the National Energy Board and the Justice, if anyone's wondering. Okay. Counselor Zabinski.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation. Just locally, I'm going to, if you can help us out locally.
Yeah.
I appreciate your presentation globally, or nationally, I should say, but a number of drilling rigs in our area, where are we at roughly? What's it going to look like toward Q4, maybe Q1 of 2020? Can you give us sort of a crystal ball, if you can, sort of?
Yeah, I can give you some context, so I can't give you numbers. What I will say is this, we've been, I've been working with folks. We hired somebody internally to, who's basically a data specialist, who can help us out with some of these things, to describe industry much more locally. It's been probably the number one request we've had from our stakeholders for the last number of years, and we haven't been able to provide that data. But we're getting to a point where hopefully in the next quarter or two, to give myself a little bit of wiggle room, where we can eventually come before council and say, okay, here's the state of the industry today, north of the peace, or, you know, however we want to define that. We're not there today. What I would say, though, based on what I did provide you, is I would expect it to be flat to down a little bit from where we were in 2018, just based on the, you know, global stats. You know, most of the kind of lower quality resource, we've already kind of pulled out of, you know, where the drilling is occurring, right? So, we're not, all that drilling basically is in the oil sands, the Montney and the Duvernay, basically. And you've got a couple other light oil plays in Alberta too, but that drilling forecast is essentially Montney-Duvernay, and it's down a bit. The other thing I would add is, you know, where you are in the Montney, you know, is going to dictate how busy you are too. So, as you've seen over the last number of years, it's busier, you know, south of the peace, because that's where the most liquids are. And so, that's where the regional activity is likely to continue to be. Not to say that there won't be drilling north of the peace, there will be, but most of the focus will be where you've seen it in the last year or two.
Perfect. And that being said, are we going to then see you probably in September and October then, with that information coming forward? And give us a little better headway. I'm sure you'll be talking industry a little bit more by that time, and let us know where we're at.
Yep, happy to do that.
Thanks. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, your worship. Well, welcome, Chris. It's always great to see you here in Fort St. John, and thank you for taking the time to come to our community and connect us with industry. So, I mean, everybody, well, not everybody, any chance Pipeline East could ever be like...
Yep.
I'm trying to like CPR.
Yeah.
Resurrected.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Use your words. You'll have a report on that. It takes a long time.
That is the only long-term hope for the industry, is to be able to access markets. Just like if you're, you know, if you're in the grain business, if you can't sell to your customers, you can't move your product to your customer, you're not going to continue producing the grain, right? And so, that's where we're at today. And, you know, I guess what I would say is, ultimately, it's going to be a political decision. Things seem to be heading in the right direction with the NEB recommendation. You know, the federal government is continuing to work on its First Nations consultation, which did not go as it ought to have, according to the court, at least, the first time around. The federal government is committed to, you know, doing that in a fairly timely way. Our concern is whether or not the federal election gets in the way of any potential decision there, because we need a decision as soon as possible. And then, the other thing I would add is that there has been a shift across the country in the nature of the discussion, and I think we should be proud of that, not, you know, from CAP, CAP alone. We have grassroots voices across the country now speaking up on these issues in a way that's favorable to industry. And that's going to have an impact as politicians take their decisions as well. It's no longer just the other side of the conversation that's being heard publicly. And so, you know, I guess my advice would be to keep up that public pressure, you know, talk to your MPs, your MLAs, your cabinet ministers that you deal with on a regular basis, to continue having this conversation and keep their feet to the fire as well.
And would that be the same advice for, like, an education component? When it comes to tanker moratoriums, the focus seems to be right now all on the west coast, but what about the east coast when we're bringing in tankers? I, and it could just be because, you know, the news is more centered into the area of where you live, but I'm not hearing as much protest against the tankers that are coming to eastern Canada.
Agreed. No, and that's, it's a frustration. Again, going back, you know, strictly to contents of the bill, it points to the fact that it's not based on science. If we can have safe shipping in St. Lawrence, if we can have safe shipping out of the port of Vancouver, we can have safe shipping out of the north coast of British Columbia. And so, these policy decisions ought to be based, in the first case, on science. And there's no science that's suggesting that we can't do in northern British Columbia what we do in southern British Columbia, or in St. Lawrence. And maybe I'll just leave it there, but I could go beyond and get closer to the politics that you want me to, I think, but I'll maybe just leave it there today.
How about railway cars?
Yeah.
Do we have enough, you know, how about for transportation? The province of Alberta was getting on board to try and ensure that they had, you know, not only for, you know, shipping oil, but also for grain and other things like that. How is, are we finding it in British Columbia for being able to ship as another method of transportation?
Yeah. So, I've certainly heard concerns from agricultural producers in both British Columbia and Alberta. I'm not sure how closely that is tied, frankly, to rail capacity versus internal workings of the two railways. I don't really know, to be honest. From an oil and gas perspective, you know, the more rail cars we have, the more we can fill, and we could fill more today. The province of Alberta stepped, has stepped in with an agreement with Canadian Pacific to purchase a number of additional cars to ship more oil. One of the consequences of the curtailment in, in British Columbia is it actually inhibits the rail economics a bit, and so the, that's why the province has stepped in and said, okay, we'll help with that as well. But again, we really shouldn't be in the position where the province of Alberta has to cut back production by force and step into the game of buying rail cars and becoming a rail shipper. We shouldn't be in the situation where the federal government has to own a pipeline. You know, we should have the proper regulatory system in place to be able to rationally have a conversation according to science and the public interest about these projects and get them built once they've been decided, so.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Grimstrud.
Thanks, your worship. Appreciate you coming in and a very educational presentation, so appreciate the update. And as Zabinski, Counselor Zabinski said, it'd be nice to hear an update closer to the sort of third, fourth quarter of the year.
Yep, happy to do that.
Just one question, you know, there was a lot of conversation going on back and forth about sort of some misunderstandings in terms of how people perceive the industry to be or perceive the risks to be, and what the science actually says, what is actually, what are the actual risks, what are the actual benefits, what are we missing out on versus, you know, the give and take? And, and just curious, what, if any, sort of, what is CAP doing to sort of educate the public in terms of these, to try and alleviate this disconnect between how people perceive the industry to be and how it actually is and what the risks are?
Yep. So, a couple of things I would say, and it's on two kind of separate tracks. So, the first track is really through our Canada's Energy Citizens Program, which is meant to address the concerns and needs of people who support the industry and to feed that conversation, that grassroots conversation that I was referring to earlier. So, would encourage you to check that out. It's geared mostly to, you know, people who are already kind of predisposed to support the industry and to provide, provide them with the information so that they can have those conversations around their kitchen table or on social media. And then, for those who have, you know, more concerns with the industry, and they're legitimate concerns, you know, we run an advertising program. It's mostly digital. It's mostly focused on the lower mainland of British Columbia and Ontario, because that's where the population base is and where a lot of these conversations are taking place when it comes to pipelines. So, you know, I certainly get the complaint in Alberta, like, we don't see any of that. You guys won't see any of it here, unless you're looking for it, because we're targeting those dollars where we feel that it will have the most impact. But what I'll, will say is, we find Canadians have concerns really along four fronts, and they're not really surprising, but we need to address those specific concerns. We can't, you know, address economic concerns with, with, sorry, we can't address environmental concerns with economic concerns, for example, right? So, we have to have the conversation where they want to have it. So, the four areas really are around the environment, and that's everything from climate change to, you know, how we produce and air emissions and all of that, though it's largely around climate these days. The second round is around safety, which again is kind of broad. It has everything to do with worker safety, but also safety of our product and making sure it stays in the pipe, it stays on facilities, and stays where it's supposed to be. The third is around economic concerns, but they're not, and this is where it's important. It's not, you know, that industry is big, that it generates a lot of dollars and provides a lot of services. It's really about, you know, what does it benefit my community? And so, that's where you have to have the conversation with folks about how the industry supports jobs in Kelowna and in, you know, Victoria and all across this province. People work in the oil and gas industry. And the oil sands, for example, does business in almost every major center across the country. Certainly, big dollars across the province and every province. And that's where you have to have that economic conversation, because otherwise, people think, you know, it's big oil and gas, they make lots of money. Yeah, sure, of course, they should be paying taxes. And then, the final one is around really reputation, and all those other things feed into it, but whether or not, you know, they can trust the industry and how it's produced. And frankly, this is where communities like Fort St. John have a real impact on that conversation, because you guys live it, more than I live it, sitting in downtown Calgary. You guys live it, and you see how companies operate, whether it's good or bad, and how that is all dealt with. And that's why your voices are very important in that conversation. You can do for the industry what we can't in that regard.
Thank you. Counselor Clausen.
Thanks, worship. Two things, actually. One is, is thank you for, for the... One is, is thank you for, for the information you provided. One of the things that you, that we hear is the opinion that oil, oil companies essentially are locked into, you know, making money no matter what. And on the other side of that, of course, and I appreciated the comments at our B.C. Resource Forum in Prince George recently, that, that a lot of the tech innovation is happening and there is a lot of that work happening. And I'm just wondering, I guess, if that's part of your communication and if people are aware of the fact that, that these big oil companies that are painted in such a bad light are working on these things and they are helping us transition and they, they do have, you know, is there, is that, is that information going out as well?
Yeah, that's a, particularly when it comes to environmental concerns, that's a lot of our focus, is on innovation. It resonates with folks, and you're right, you know, the oil and gas industry is committed to improving its environmental performance. And we have a high-tech industry in Calgary, and it's dedicated to the oil and gas industry. We have a high-tech industry here in town, and it's folks coming up with solutions to these, these problems. And, you know, I could give a whole host of examples, but, you know, I know of a very small startup in Alberta right now, it's going out, and they feel they can do methane detection on site for like $500, which is unheard of. And if, you know, they're doing the work and they're working with, you know, PTAC, which is Petroleum Technology Association of Canada, funded by industry. And, you know, if that works, then we don't, you know, it goes a long way to helping industry in an economic way reduce our, our methane challenge that we have in front of us. So, you know, we're not just out there throwing chain, you know, trying to punch holes in the ground anymore. It's much more complicated than that.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I do appreciate that. I guess that's just one of the messages that, that we need to keep getting out there, too, is that, that, again, that perception that oil companies are like they were 100 years ago, 50 years ago, whatever, but there's a difference. The other, just the, the debate that I hear continue is refineries.
Yeah.
What's, what, what would your message be? Why, why don't we have more refineries in Canada?
Yeah. So the short answer is it's not economic to build them. We actually have excess refining capacity in North America as a whole. We are a net exporter of refined product as a country. The market looks weird because it's mostly north-south, right? And so it looks kind of strange. And then, you know, the reality is Asian countries, they want the oil to refine it closer to source so they can determine what products they use, and it's, it's more economic for them at the end of the day. You know, but again, you know, any customer for us right now is a good customer, so if the economics were to work, we would certainly support a refinery. It's not, you know, that we oppose refineries, we don't. Where there's opportunity on the so-called value add really is on the natural gas side. We have very cheap product. We're seeing a lot of activity there, less so here unfortunately, a lot more in Alberta, where we have government incentive to, you know, try to move some of that along as well. But to build a more complex petrochemical industry domestically, you know, that then leads to plastics and fertilizers and other products that, that add value, that's where the real opportunity is in the value add. The refining, the economics are just really difficult. Okay, thank you.
Good. I just want to take an opportunity to discuss a couple of points that were raised. I remember very distinctly a mayor from northern British Columbia whose community was built along the railway, where there was a rail, a train going through. Fire department on one side of the railway, the fire on the other side. And if the rail, if, if the trains, the length of the trains increased because of the need to move oil, they would have issues. And that is not just that one community. When he mentioned that, it was like, think about every community along the rail line that is in that situation.
Yeah.
And so the, to that point, pipelines is the appropriate
Yeah.
transportation for these commodities, and that's what we need to focus on. I had a conversation with someone in the lower mainland about refineries and the environmental assessment process that they would have to go through if a refinery was going to be built. And I asked, would you be okay with that being built in, in your jurisdiction? No, someone else's, but not ours. I said, yeah, but you want them built.
Right.
So, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate that. May I ask how long you're in Fort St. John for?
Not very long. I'm headed to Hudson's Hope and spending a few hours in the hotel. I've got a 5:00 AM flight tomorrow morning, unfortunately.
Oh, lucky for you.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll be in touch, I'm sure.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.